All right, so we have our student of the month. We're going to announce the November students of the month. We couldn't quite wrap up the December certificates and everything in time, so we'll, next meeting, we'll do both December and January. So, students are nominated by their teachers for consistently displaying our values of Cougar Pride by being safe, respectful, responsible, and trustworthy. The honorees for November are kindergarten Kylie Savlik, grade one Parry Patel, grade two Nina Gigliotti, grade three Brett Barber, grade four Kayden Adamick, grade five Aiden DeJesus, grade six Yuge Patel, grade seven Ashlyn LaFlem, and grade eight Faith Smith. Conferences were back in December. They went well considering that they were done via meet and phone calls. From what I could gather, any discrepancies in times, things like that, were made up, and they made some mutual agreements to try to make sure that those conferences took place. And I know in some cases where parents couldn't get into, like, in a typical time couldn't get into the building, they appreciated having that option to be able to do it virtually, so. So going forward, you know, certainly, hopefully, there isn't a need there, but it might be wise to keep that option for some scenarios, so. So that's all I have for, for now.
Any questions for Brian? There being none, Scott.
All right, good afternoon. It's been a while. There's been a lot of students moving inside special ed. So we can see how our numbers in November, we had seventy-two students. You see how that number is, is Lisbon Central School, we see how that number increased to seventy-eight, and you see in January it's listed as seventy-seven. I would like to note that one of the students in that count is actually a referral and is pending. They are not special ed, so that January count should actually be seventy-six. You can see how it impacts both for our school, with the high school, going from November to January one oh five to one thirteen. I'd like to run down a little bit about why some of these numbers have changed over the last couple of months. So, we've had, in the month of November, two students exit special ed, no longer needing services. We had, we had two students moving out of our district, and then we had someone moving into the district, the high school. Then in the month of December, we had three students come from birth of three, and we had a new student move in from another district, and then we had another student identified for special ed. And then that other student that, for that month, was a referral and is only pending, they're not special ed just yet. And they may not be, so they're, they're in the evaluation process. And then we had three new students at, in the other school level, moving to the district from outside, from outside of the district. And then, for the month of January, we exited a student, no longer needing services, and we had another student come to us from birth of three. So, that's, that's the numbers for special ed. Any questions?
I, I have one.
Sure.
The sharp training under the high schools.
Yes. That is a student who's eighteen to twenty-two. They moved to us from another district.
And, and, but I don't know what sharp training is.
Sharp training is, is services for special ed, someone that was special ed student, they were in a high school. They are special ed, so they have not graduated yet, they were elected to be a part of the eighteen to twenty-two transition referral program. The sharp training is like job training.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, this student is, is part-time.
Uh-huh.
And she will have those services until she turns twenty-one.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Any other questions?
And, next update I have is, our preschool program is using the SparkLearn app. The two classroom teachers we have, Mrs. Kimmich and Ms. Overhalter, are, once a month, giving the families an activity to do with their child at home. The SparkLearn app is, one example is, the January request from Mrs. Kimmich was to do charades, like a
Oh, yeah.
pre-skill version of charades. So they take the app, they look at the card, and the card is like a five-step or less description of how to do this preschool version of charades with your child, and interact with your child, and how to just, like, have that experience. So, there are some that relate to writing, there's some that relate to doing something outside, but they're actually not using a computer or technology. They just use the app to get the directions, and then put the phone down and get out with their kid and do the activity. So, once a month, each teacher is assigning something. The family's able to use this app anytime they like, if they're looking for something to do with their child. There's a lot of categories and a lot of cards with descriptions, and they can pick something, so. It's a nice feature and, and a nice tool for the, for the family. And then update, and then, also, I have, I completed the last, this was supposed to come in a preview for me, but I completed a, the last of a series of webinars on, with Kenny Bento, because I am also the homeless liaison. So I had one in October and one in November, but just updating you that that was my final one in the series. The new series of webinars that I'm, and training I'll be going through next, with some other people in this school as well soon, is on the documentation system for special ed. It's moving out of our current frontline IEP Direct, and it's going into Connecticut, it's developed their own. We'll be moving everything over in July, so that series of training is starting this month. So there'll be a number of trainings I have to go through. April, who's my secretary down in that, in my office, she'll be going through that training. So, and then we'll be having, the teachers have to go through that training as we convert our whole system over. So that's a big project. And then, the last update I have for you is regarding our social worker. I thought I'd let the board know that, you know, we have a point-two position social worker. She has been providing, provided this position for a grant, and she is working for us two days a week. And she's currently working with seven students across grades, mid-grade. She's able to see, you know, a few students more than once a week. She's been able to consult with students with outside, like, families with outside referrals for counseling and community resources. She has attended PPTs for some of the students that we thought needed some assistance from a social worker. And then we also have had her contact parents and guardians' families for an outside therapist, as needed. And then, our school psychologist was on maternity leave. We have, we're fortunate enough that she was able to pick up some extra time, so she worked an extra day a week to help with some of the coverage for our school psychologist. And she was able to increase the number of students we saw, being thirteen students for our school psychologist during the week, during that time period that she was out on maternity. So it was very, very helpful for our school. We really appreciate having her. Enter for.
Any questions? Any questions for Scott? Okay, thank you very much. The business office, Cindy.
Just an update on the RFP for transportation. It was put out in December. I've spoken to a few of the vendors. I anticipate that we're going to be getting three different proposals for the transportation bid. That will be ending on January thirty-first at 2022. So, once we get those, we'll be looking at those and assessing the best way to move forward. As far as the budget prep goes for our next fiscal year, that's, that's a work in progress right now. We'll be meeting tomorrow to kind of go over the initial presentation of it, Sally and I, and then we'll be presenting it to the finance committee and the subcommittee going forward. So, the budget is well on its way, so we'll get there.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy? Okay, Brian McGlue.
So we've had some new AC units installed. Over the past few weeks, BT Lindsay's been here on-site installing them. These units were purchased out of last year's money and were installed in the special ed office, the staff lounge, and room forty-six. We've also had the fire alarm system inspected during the holiday break. The fire alarm system was tested by TPC Systems. All signals were received by the monitoring station. They did report a damaged pole station, which they are working on getting us a price to repair it. We've also had a sprinkler inspection. AL fire protection was also here during the break. The quarterly inspection, no issues were reported during this inspection. All signals were also received by the monitoring station. That's it.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, there being none. Sally.
Thank you. I wanted to tell you about the vaccine clinics that were recently held. I did give you the screening consent form. That is a standard form from Uncas Health District. Anyway, it's a standard form. I don't think there'll be anything to surprise you in it. However, I wanted to tell you that on December sixteenth, we held a clinic. Thirty-four people attended. Thirty-two were Lisbon residents, and two were from outside Lisbon. On January sixth, forty attended. Sixteen were Lisbon residents, and then twenty-four from the outside. They were very, very successful, worked like clockwork. I want to thank DPH and Teresa Swab for putting it together. Teresa also wants you to know that we have had eighty-one positive COVID cases since the beginning of school. Twenty-six of them have occurred since January third. So there's been a real uptick of cases, but that's not just in Lisbon. It's across, it's, it's everywhere. But she did want that on the record, so she's been very busy. Today, I think she took fifty, fifty-one phone calls regarding COVID, and that's on top of the ones I took and the emails, so. It, it's busy, and we're hoping that this some, someday slows down. It's not like the other pandemics we've had. Little joke. Okay, we'll move on. Reopening of school committee. I typically try to give you copies of the minutes, and that's why I put the last meeting in there. It was held December sixth, but I have to tell you, some of it's already old news. For example, about the mask. Masks are required for sports. It's not an option. Wrestling is not in our cafeteria right now. We will have a meeting in June where maybe I'll have some other things to tell you, but. In terms of tech schools, by statute, if a student wants to go to a tech school, only the one that we offer, and they're already involved in a specialized program, we are obligated to fund up to $6,000 for transportation. This came about because of a case that came to us maybe two years ago with a family. I honestly didn't know about this. I don't know if you recall that meeting. I had to admit to you, I didn't know. And when I called other superintendents, they said they didn't want to know about it. Sometimes ignorance is bliss, but, anyway, when it comes up, we try to help the family out. If we can hook them up with another school district because it's cheaper, we do so. If we can't, we try to get, if we can't get our own bus, I meant, and we couldn't get first student for this specific case. If we can't, then the poor parent has to either do it himself or herself, or they have to get a cab or whatever, which is highly costly. In this specific case, it costs approximately $27 per day. Quote, am I right on that, Cindy? Okay. Twenty-seven dollars per day. So, that student, we won't even do the $6,000 by the end of the year, but that's how this all came about. The agreement that you see in the packet was, I didn't do it, I can't give you the credit, I, I can't take the credit. It goes to Diana Cormier, who ran it by a lawyer. So that was all done through an attorney, which I did bring to the board with Diana way back. I, I don't know, does this ring a bell with anyone?
It does.
Oh, okay. So that's how this came about, and I just wanted to clarify it.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so. No, I'm done.
Okay, any questions to Sally? Okay, we are on to approval of monthly expenditures. I need a motion to approve monthly expenditures for November twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of $9,224. Lauren makes the motion. The second is Joe Lurick. Any questions? Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve monthly expenditures for December twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of zero dollars. That is correct? Okay. Do I have a motion? Lauren, second? Do I have a second? Joe, Lurick. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? There being none, motion carries. I need a motion to approve monthly expenditures for November twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of $623,376.51. Do I have a motion? Lauren, and a second by Joan Marshall. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, the, I need a motion to approve the monthly expenditures for December twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of $1,404,171.20. Do I have a motion? Joe Lurick, and a second. Joan Marshall, any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Financial statement, I need a motion to approve the fiscal statement for November twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, as presented by the administration. Motion? Lauren, second. Joe Lurick. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the financial statement for December twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, as presented by the administration. A motion? Lauren, a second by Jenny Danberg. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the financial statement for November twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, as presented by the administration. A motion? Joe Lurick, a second. Joan Marshall, any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the financial statement for December twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, as presented by the administration. Joe Lurick, second by. Joan Marshall, any questions? Comments? Yes. I, I, I can't hear you. No. I, your microphone.
You know why? He's got to press the button, unless it's not working.
Yeah, it's on now.
When are we going to wrap up the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget?
Now yours is working.
The hope is to get that done in the next month. We just, we had, BT Lindsay was here quite a bit over the break, taking care of a lot of the stuff, so our hope is that they will be all wrapped up by the end of January, early February.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And the new business, we have acceptance and approval of employee's letter of retirement and possible action for Kim Lang, and Joe is going to read her letter.
Is your voice tired from all the motioning?
It's like trying to breathe.
Okay, well, I guess we should have expected Ms. Lang, as an English teacher, to
You're not on.
Yeah?
It sounds like you're, yeah.
Okay, to have a lengthy letter. So, dated November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, "Dear Mrs. Keating, Mr. Apperson, and Lisbon Board of Education, this is to inform you that at the close of the school year, I will be retiring from my teaching position. At this time, I'd like to thank the present and previous administrations and Board of Education members for nurturing and supporting my professional growth these past forty years. The time off to participate in three required field studies to complete my second master's in environmental science education was greatly appreciated. It was an honor to participate in the Fulbright Teacher Exchange Program, which gave me the opportunity to live and teach in Bristol, England for a year. And years later, I was granted time off to travel to China with the People-to-People, Language Arts, and Reading delegation, where I had the privilege to represent Connecticut. During this trip, I was chosen by fellow delegates to speak to young teachers in training at Beijing Normal University on the implementation of literature circles. This was truly a unique experience. All these adventures took me away from my classroom, but allowed me to bring renewed energy and firsthand information back to my students to enhance their learning. For that, I am truly grateful to you all. To the LCS staff, you are an incredibly talented and caring group of individuals that I have had the privilege to work with."
Maybe we need batteries in these.
I don't know, I'm going to talk to Nova.
Okay, should I start over?
No, no, no.
Just pick up where you think you left off.
"You have shared my greatest joys and helped me through my darkest hours. It was a colleague and a friend who stressed that it takes a village to raise a child. It was a colleague that shared with me that Beck kept a silver-framed picture of her and her dad in her desk. And years later, so many of you supported both of us as Beck transitioned from Rebecca to Beckham. You took the time to listen to me, Vince, gave me a shoulder to cry on, and asked questions gently to help us both get to the happiness we enjoy today. It was a colleague that shortened Meredith to Mary, so Beck had an easier time writing stories about her new baby sister. Another colleague realized that Mary couldn't hear properly. And years later, it was the men in white coats who gave Mary her true passion and direction in life: science. I thank each of you for being part of that, of the village that raised my children. Finally, with Beck in his grown-up job and Mary set to graduate from Temple University in May, the time is right to retire. I know that many see retirement as the next chapter in the book of life, but for me, I'm done with this book in a hundred and twenty-two days. It's time for a hike on the AT, a paddle on the Boundary Waters, or cruise along Route sixty-six. But whatever and wherever it is, I take with me beautiful lasting memories of LCS and wish each of you the very best as you continue your journey. Sincerely, Kimberly Lang."
A motion to accept and approve Mrs. Lang's letter of retirement with regret and to wish her much, much success in the future.
I'll make the motion.
Ian and Joe Lurick. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And next is the acceptance and approval of employee's letter of resignation.
Okay, dated December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, "Dear Mrs. Sally Keating, it is with regret that I am submitting my resignation as principal of Lisbon Central School, effective July first, twenty-twenty-two. The last six years have been an amazing experience and opportunity. I thank you, the Lisbon Board of Education, parents, students, teachers, and community, for your support for the last six years. At this point in my career, I feel it is the right thing to do for me and my family. Lisbon is a wonderful community, where I started my career as an educator back in two thousand as an intern, then being hired as a sixth-grade teacher. I am beyond thankful to be able to return to the classroom, but most importantly, to remain at Lisbon Central School. Thank you again for all of your support. Sincerely, Brian Apperson."
A motion to accept and approve Mr. Apperson's letter of resignation with regret and to wish him much success in the future. Ian and Joe Lurick. Questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you, and thank you, Brian. Next on the agenda is the amendment to the bylaws of the Board Number ninety-one twenty-one. And Joan, did you want to take that?
All we did was add November to clarify that our officers will be elected in November, so we don't have the same debacle we had before.
Okay. So, um, let's see. We need to make a motion to approve?
I think you got to waive it.
Oh, yeah, waive the first read, sorry.
Yep, that's all right.
A motion to waive the first read. Joe Lurick makes the motion. The second by Joan Marshall. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor of waiving the first read, say aye. Those opposed? There being none, motion carries. And now, a motion to approve and adopt? No motion? Jenny makes the motion. Second by Joan Marshall. Any questions? Comments? Yes. We, we We try
I mean, I'm guessing there's a lot of guidelines about that. I just don't know what they are.
That sounds like two separate issues there. The, the ability to vote on a nomination presented, whether physical presence is required, or can someone, like, when Scott used to be in China, could he have voted remotely because he's directly in contact with someone here for a position? So I guess, I guess the two questions are, do you have to be physically present to be eligible to vote? Obviously, that, that would be out the window, a remote, a fully remote meeting, but if it's an in-person meeting, can a board member participate in the meeting remotely in some way and be eligible to vote? And the second, separate question was about the nomination process. And again, in that prior example, that's why you saw a missed call that night. I tried, we tried contacting, we didn't know, and the fear was, like someone said, do you nominate someone who doesn't want the, the position, then, then what do you, what do you do then if you, if they nominate, then they have to?
And, and
That, you know, if there's part people, we figure out that way. Excluding people, nominating people, excluding people who are, you know, who are out of town, in shape for, driving search, or whatever. I mean, and the prime example is, if you're the board chair, and you've been
And you've been sitting there for three or four years, and you happen to be scheduled for surgery that night. You're not here, guess what? You just lost your job.
What, what we tried to do, Ian, is we tried to model it after town practice. So the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee, both, as far as I know, function in the same way. And because of the situation we were in, that if we did not act, the Board of Selectmen could act. Members felt as though it was pressing to act. And so we, I, I feel as though we modeled it after what our town committees do.
Like you said, you have, you have special meetings in town.
Any member could have asked for it to be tabled as well.
And they did.
Who, who asked?
The first motion was from Joan, who said, vote for the election office.
Bless you.
And, and then it was. Right.
And he made the motion to to limit, limit those who are present to a certain nomination. So, all right, whatever. I'm just saying, I mean, if we're gonna vote on bylaws and let's pass it out, I mean, if that's the way it's gonna be, then let's put it down and write it.
So we need to know what the rules are, I think.
I agree.
Find out what the rules are, find out what we have, what we don't.
Okay, so, so we can, we can go ahead and, and vote on this motion. And then we can also work on this and bring more information back for possible further changes. And, and if other members feel that way, then they can vote no to the motion, and then we can. Okay? Okay, so the motion is to accept 9121 with November being added. So any other comments, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, let's have a show of hands so it's clear. Those in favor, raise your hand. So we have four in favor. Those opposed? We have two. Motion carries. And Joan, I believe you're going to look into this further?
Yes, I will. Do you have a private tool to run it up?
I do.
Can I borrow it?
Yes, you could. In fact, I have two. Okay? Next on the agenda is expanded facility use and possible action. Dave, I believe this is your topic.
Yeah, I guess. I, I didn't really have any formal thing, other than just kind of reiterating the fact that without a real community center, I know it's been an odd year with pandemic stuff, but just reiterating that going forward in the future, trying to maximize use of the facility, I think should be a, hopefully a priority for both school groups, youth groups, whenever we can, to try to. You know, you see some other towns have used some of their relief funding to expand some offerings. And we've tried to do that with clubs, but we've been kind of held back because of the current status. But some other schools are adding more sports programs and other extracurriculars. And I just think trying to maximize the use of the facility beyond the regular school day should be a goal of the, of the school board. So that's, that's about it. Like, I don't know, we used to have some youth wrestling, whatever, other, any other programs. We've got the gym, we've got the cafeteria, we've got other facilities. I just think the, the more we can use them, the better off we are.
Anyone have anything to add to that? Any other comments? Okay, next is overtime and coverage of the nursing department.
I could start the conversation, and then Cindy can take it from there.
Okay.
This just has to do with, again, the impact of COVID in particular, that the nursing office has been extremely, extremely busy. We did put into the ESSAR grant approximately $8,900. I think it's 964, yeah, there it is, to be used by the nursing office to cover expenses related to COVID. However, we did go over that a bit, and I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And I think Cindy did a nice job doing a summary here. Now, a lot of this was due to contact tracing. There was a lot of work on weekends, nights, holidays, you name it. Again, it's across the state. Contact tracing now has pretty much gone out the window. I, I guess that's the only way to put it. However, it's still very busy during the school day. As I told you previously, Teresa had something like 51 calls today. Now, what gets done after that, there's not a lot of time. These phone calls aren't just two seconds, they're lengthy. So, we have another nurse that comes in to help. Her name is May, she does a wonderful job. I think that's gonna continue for a while, until we can get a handle now on the day-to-day stuff. Again, in terms of the overtime that was being done on weekends, holidays, that's gonna go away. However, there's a lot to be done during the workday. So now I'm gonna hand this over to Cindy, if you don't mind.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to update on that, so when we have May come in, she gets a set rate of $200 a day. So she's really careful about if she's coming in for half a day, or she's coming in. So we're using that as sparingly as we can. And like Sally was saying, with the kind of elimination of contact tracing over the weekends and stuff and nighttime, that should help with some of this expenses being charged to the, the regular certified salary. So we're working on the best way to move forward with that. But just wanted to make sure that people knew that with COVID right now and the workload in that office, that there are, there might be some additional expenses as we move forward.
Questions? Ian?
Yes.
So, so, yeah, so that's true. So in the, in the ESSAR grant, we allocated a certain amount of money for the, their COVID kind of stuff. There are other COVID expenses, supplies and that kind of stuff, but this particular line item of the $8,964 was specific for overtime for nurses.
So is really a subset budget, or?
Well, there is a way, but we don't want to. Because of other needs we have.
Like the last week, the last week and a half, we were talking about spending some of that money on inclusion and things like that.
On what?
Inclusion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're not using your microphone, Anne.
No, it's okay, I, I got it now. You said inclusion, I'm sorry.
So we were talking about spending some of that ESSAR grant on inclusion and things like that outside the realm of COVID-related expenses. To me.
Oh, okay.
If we have to bring in another nurse to support contact tracing, to support our nurse, and actually gain for, out of the, out of certified.
Uh, in terms of, I hear you, number one. But I have to clarify something. In terms of what you said about inclusion, these grants are for loss of learning. That's one of the primary goals of the grants. Loss of learning, we take care of by such things, and I can have Scott and Brian attest to this, by putting more support in the classrooms. That is part of those grants. It, it's even more of a high priority than what I'm bringing forth to you now. Just like summer school for regular ed, we never did that before. But for loss of learning, we're doing it. So I can't just turn my head about the support that teachers need in the classrooms now to get kids up to speed. So that is part of the grant. Right now, based upon what we need, because we met as a team, we cannot really give any more money towards the nursing. Some districts didn't even go there. We did. They really went academic, social, emotional, and that's, that's fine. But we, we did disperse the money over different accounts, we call it. So custodian, for example, although that's gone. To give more support for that, when we had to do the heavy in-depth cleaning. So, this is, this is it. 400 and something. Well, summer school, transport, all that adds up.
Yeah, it does.
It, and the state, whether people agree or not, I don't want to get political here, really was pushing for things like summer school. Support in the classrooms. Get the kids up to speed as much as we can. And that's where we went. However, we did have, I hope this comes out right without, I don't want to brag. We did have the foresight to put money in other categories, such as nursing, the custodian. We have a person who's a, we call him a temporary runner. It's probably one of the best ways we could have spent the money. So we did try. I hope that answered the question.
Ian, did that answer your question?
Well, or Scott and Brian can chime in too, but.
Multiple priorities, and, you know, some of it is to provide the support there. And, but one of the main priorities was with the academics and trying to support that. I think it was three main priorities, right?
Yeah. And? What? Oh, okay. Anything else? I don't think we need a motion.
Well.
Do you want a motion?
It is, I see where Ian, well, if I understand Ian correctly, I want to talk for Ian. I, I see where he's coming from. It, it is the Board of Ed budget, and it wasn't allocated. So I truly get, that's why I said I hear you, Ian. So in a way, I think a vote might be needed. But, but it's up to you all. If, if you, if you don't want to do it, then, then that's fine. But I, I just understand, I thi, I think Ian's question is a question that maybe other people might have. I, I don't know, but.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve overtime and coverage for the nursing department? A motion? No motion?
And that's okay. I mean, i, if, if the board is saying, that's why I put it on the agenda. If the board is saying, uh-uh, we're not going there, I, I'm okay with that. I just thought it had to be brought to the board.
I, I, I don't see how we cannot.
Well, that's my question, what's the alternative?
Well, things, wait a minute, I think Ian, I'm sorry, I, I think I cut Ian off. I heard you, Joan, but I think Ian was gonna.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Joan.
No, my, my question is, what is the alternative?
We only get so mu, oh.
Are there other alternatives? I mean, to me, a certified salary account is a, is a sacred thing, right? We, we shouldn't mess with that. Is there any way we could take any of that 20, 20, 21, $41,000 that we're gonna give back to the town and use it for COVID-related expenses? We haven't closed the books on that yet, right?
Cindy's gonna take it. I, I think.
Something that we have to look at. I mean, I'm certainly willing to kind of go back to the drawing board and see if, that the board doesn't want to approve coming out of certified salaries, where we can allocate that to. I don't have an answer off the top of my head, but we can certainly look at where that might be able to come from. You know, part of this right now is that it's, it's easy to refix, but this money has already kind of been expensed to this. So we can kind of go back to the drawing board and look at where we want to do that. But I'm happy to take a look at where it can come from. I just don't think we can say, let's put it to another part of the grant.
So, I, I don't know if I understood what you said, Anne.
Me either.
But, but did you ask about taking money, the $41,000 to be returned to the town, and using that for this?
I, I mean.
Is, is, is that what you asked?
To me, I would go to the town and say, hey, we're gonna give you guys back $41,000. However, we have this hole that's COVID-related, we'd like to use it.
Now, the way I understand it is this is an expense for this school year, not the last school year, so that $41,000 is untouchable for something that's spent now. That's the way I understand the way things operate.
And I agree. I'm sorry, Ian, I couldn't hear you.
I, I understand.
Okay.
But we could ask the town, couldn't we?
We could ask for a special appropriation.
Yeah.
But, but I think if we were to ask for a special appropriation, we need to wait until we're further into the school year. Because we, we a lot of times do have money left over at the end of the school year. So, to me, the way I see this is it's just sort of logistics on where the dollars are coming from, but that they do need to be spent.
So why don't we put it in the COVID-related expenses line item, and we'll just go in arrears?
And, and what line item?
I don't know, it's a new one for this year, COVID-related expenses. It's, uh, COVID-19 supplies, 613, 01.5. Third one from the bottom.
Do, do you see that, Cindy?
No, hers isn't working.
I mean, to me, I would rather keep it separate. I mean, if we're gonna spend money outside of what we budgeted because we have COVID-related real expenses, at the end of the day, I would like to see it broken out and not tap into certified salaries.
And then it's gonna be very clear going forward on it was COVID money.
Yeah, that way, if we have to go back to the town and say, hey, we need more money, right?
Right. And that, then we'd be able to see what it is, even if there was even state or federal money going forward, we would have it earmarked as that.
And we might get more money this year anyway, right? More COVID money.
Yeah, who knows?
All right. Should I answer Joan's question, or you won't?
And, and, and Joan, you had a question?
No, my question was what? My question was just, what are the alternatives?
Okay, okay, so we sort of addressed that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, okay, I, I was gonna add just something, but it's, it's not optimal. When I spoke to Teresa today, we are very, very responsive to parents in the community, highly responsive. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. We kind of pride ourselves on it. So maybe sometimes I look at that and say, maybe we're too quick to respond and let go of some of the things that we had to do that day. So the thing is, if we don't get the money, where I was going, it, it wouldn't be a pretty picture. We just wouldn't be as responsive to the parents as quickly as we are, and administration would take more on. It'd be, it would fall to administration. I'm, not just, but Brian Apperson and I are already involved. With a lot of this along with Megan Jenkins. Could we take on more? It'd be tough. But if we had to, I mean, like Joan said, I can't just let everything fall by the wayside. We just have to work more, and we don't, we don't get overtime. It, it. We just do it.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we should go that route. You guys do do a great job communicating with the parents, and I think this is a confusing enough time. The regulations change, you know, they go back and forth.
It's fast.
Parent, you're, you're just gonna get more confusion, you're gonna have more parents sending kids in when they shouldn't send kids in.
I agree.
It's just gonna make things worse. So I, I hate to take that step. But I do see Anne's point of maybe we just keep it in a COVID category, so that way, if we do need money at the end of the year, we can say, well, we have these extra costs that are related to COVID, and it's a better way to track the expenses.
So, so I get the sense from the board that you, you didn't want it to come out of the first line item, but to be earmarked into that COVID line item. So could, would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Just to clear, again, I think nobody was requesting that there not be the proper funding as needed to continue in this manner, to continue the responsiveness that's been going on, which has been terrific, and to fund the nurse's office. But I do agree with Ian's point. I can see someone, if it goes for that current line item, you know, some people, when it comes to budget time, oh, how come your, how come your, you know, salaries have increased by X? And if that number were to grow considerably, you know, it's not truly a reflection of what would be an annual budgeted salary thing. So the, the more it could be kept separate, I think it is better.
So.
I think that's clear. I, I think we got to a good resolution.
Okay, so we just need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to keep COVID-related expenses, including additional time for school nurse and school nurse's aide under COVID-related expenses line item. All right?
Okay. Do we have a second, Lauren? Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is time allotted for social studies instruction.
That'll be Mr. Apperson?
So I know the question was kind of focused on, with a, a larger focus on math, has that any impact on social studies? So the way our, our social studies is scheduled currently for Arcata Four, it's integrated with ELA, and it's also, depending on the project, can be given some of its own special time. But again, those classes are self-contained, so one day it could go a lot longer, another day it could go a lot less, so on and so forth there. But in five through eight, that's when we do have the 45-minute class period per day. So nothing changed there. Where there was a, a change was during our SRBI enrichment time, where what we would typically do is we'd identify those students who needed the math or ELA support. where what we would typically do is we'd identify those students who needed the math or ELA support, and we would try to provide that support. For those that didn't meet those thresholds, we would try to provide enrichment activities and various different things. So where we've made a change is that now those kids who might be not necessarily needing intervention, but maybe not necessarily, you know, they, they could benefit from more math intervention, even though they might not normally qualify. So in essence, those kids would be taking classes that just have more math focus during that enrichment time. So instead of enriching them, we're going to focus on the math. So it might be, you know, intervention, skill work, that sort of thing. We did not typically have, you know, social studies focus during that enrichment time. It typically was math and ELA focused. With, with that said, though, in some cases with those true enrichments, it, it could very well be there, but we didn't have anything specific. So really, there's, there's no change. The only other change also is just during the technology class, the programs that are being taught and used in there are going to be more focused on math, where there might be some cases where it might have been a social studies focus. But again, not a consistent thing. So there hasn't been too much of an impact on that. It's really been more in the enrichment time. So I hope that answers.
Any questions? Okay. Next is math instruction.
That'll be Brian again, please.
Actually, I think we skipped, is it brochure?
Maybe?
Oh, okay.
It's okay, it's all right.
Yeah, the brochure, sorry about that.
I can start that and then give it to Brian. You just have a draft in front of you that Brian and I worked on with Learn. We know there are a few things here, some grammatical, there's a typo, for example, something should have been capitalized, that kind of deal. Also, of course, those aren't pictures of our kids. We would have pictures of our kids and have more diversity there. But other than that, we just wanted your opinion as to what you thought. And Brian, do you want to add anything to that, or just wait, or what, what would you like to do?
No, I think it's just, you know, the point was just kind of see how it looks, and then we can make, you know, we can still edit throughout any part of this, so, even with the layout, so.
And it'll come to the board before the final go-to-print?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Just, just one thing, and I know it's difficult, but we as a board, when we get these, sometimes the copies are so poor, we can't read them.
You can't read them, yeah.
And, and you know, I did read this, and I got to who we are, I have no idea what that said. So if there's some way for us to get better copies, especially when you want us to like proofread them, you know, even, even if it has to, you know, not be in the whole packet and it's a separate, you know, thing you send us, that would be appreciated.
Could it be a PDF? Could we get it electronically?
Yeah. You know, especially when you want us to proofread it.
Yes, Colleen brought some copies to the, to the meeting, but you'd have to read it now. I don't know if you want to.
No, no, I, I mean, we don't need to read them now, but if, if we could have gotten those in our packet and instead, so that we could actually read them.
I think, I think Cal can do that.
Okay.
Can you call?
That's okay. Right, right. And, and the thing is, you know, you could do the, do it as the paper packet and then, so that we would have had it two ways. We would have had it in the packet and as a PDF. Okay? Yes, Dave?
I know you'll be making little changes and stuff. I, I forget, did we, did we solidify Ledgerd as an option?
Oh, we skipped right over it.
No, well, no, no, not in the, not in the.
Oh, no, no, you didn't.
Not in our, not in our agenda, but in the brochure, I couldn't remember. If Ledgerd was a definite go, I just want to make sure that that got noted.
Jay asked me, oh, sorry, you don't know.
I know we're jumping.
Superintendent Jay Hartling, sorry, for the record, asked me if I could not talk about this board meeting, but since it came up, I'll just tell him I did. Well, it's very interesting. He, I had a verbal okay from Jay, and then I was approached by Shipman and Goodwin to sign off about can they negotiate the contract, because they both, they represent both districts, Shipman and Goodwin, Ledger and us. So you always have to do a sign-off. I then got from Superintendent Hartling that his Ledgerd VoAG program has an issue with this. So I wrote back, I told him I would tell you all this if you asked, and I wrote back saying, I don't really understand this. That's a specialized program. He said, well, they think you're going to take kids away from their program. And I wrote back again saying, but I don't really understand this, Jay. It's a specialized program. The high school program versus the VoAG is very different. He said, well, I'll have to get back to you. So I wrote back to him again and said, Jay, do you really want us? I mean, I said nicely, but you know, it's been going on a little bit long, and I get it's due to the pandemic. Trust me, I mean, he has a high school, it's a different story when you have a high school. Everything is just multiplied, magnified. I said, but you know, it's getting, it's, it's a long process. I, I will get back to you. Now, with everything going on with the changes in the state, I, I understand why he hasn't. With contact tracing now going out the window, I am going to call. Oh, and he asked me not to, he said, wait till I get back to you before you discuss it. I forgot that part, sorry. But I'm going to say it came up, and you know, we, we had to, in so many words, fisher cut bait. I mean, that's, I don't know how the board feels. So Dave, that's why, it's a long-winded answer, but that's where we're at.
Okay, like I said, I just didn't see it there, and if it was going to be in, it'd be nice to list it. And I, and I understand his concern, the total number of students going to Ledgerd would not be decreased. But I do agree that you would possibly have fewer kids doing the VoAG option, for kids who just really wanted to go to Ledgerd and were choosing the VoAG option as a means by which to go to Ledgerd. It happens, Joe's aware of it, it happens at the VoAG program at Killingley. You get grizzled kids who go to Killingley, they want to go to Killingley. VoAG is not the main driver in some cases.
Right.
But it allows them that option. So I can understand if there's some reason that it makes a difference of which program they are going to, but I don't know what that reason is.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, never mind.
Anything else? Okay.
So I can get, if you want, I can get back to him saying it came up. And that we want it on the next board, board agenda, because right now, the kids, eighth graders are looking at choices.
Exactly.
And I said all this, but.
Okay, we would appreciate that.
Okay, no problem.
And lastly, on the brochure, I have to say, I was educated, I had no idea there was only 16 square miles in Lisbon. I would have thought the number was considerably larger. I learned something reading your brochure.
We got that from the town. We hope it's right.
It is, it is right.
Okay. What did you say?
I don't know.
What, Brian, we couldn't hear, what? Someone said something, we couldn't hear it, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Oh, 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 oh.
They're excluding us.
Oh, 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 okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is math instruction and plan for improvement.
That's Brian.
Yep. So, so our latest focus is really looking at the, we're doing content check-ins just to see where everyone's where they're supposed to be, and providing feedback based on where they're at, and looking at the assessments, and also trying to integrate the interim assessment blocks and trying to make sure that those are happening in the right spot. So we're trying to make sure those are aligned. So that's the big focus recently. With that, now it's January, we are looking at testing in the spring. So we're now looking at test prep, test, taking strategies, understanding the assessment beyond just the interim assessment blocks. So looking at daily practice with examples, you know, sort of like do-nows and things like that, to really focus on that. And then looking at administering those blocks and updating the student accommodations. And then finally, January is when we do our winter benchmarks. So we will be looking to see, you know, how they do, how they do on those, and then also looking, relooking at our groups again, because it should be fluid. We always want to be making adjustments. And maybe someone goes from that math intervention group that was really, really, you know, intense, maybe to go into one of those less intense ones. And likewise, maybe someone might have more of a need in a certain area, depending on what they're focusing on. So making the adjustments there. So those are the big latest focuses right now. We, of course, with the testing coming up, we'll be doing the goal sheets as well, but we're not there yet.
Any questions or comments for Brian? Okay, next on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. And I'd like a motion to move this agenda item 10I discussion regarding the superintendent's evaluation and approval of the evaluation immediately following agenda item number 13, public comment. Ian made the motion, Joe Lorick seconds. Any questions, any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Those, those who disapprove? Okay, so then the next thing on the agenda is committee reports. I don't believe there are any. And then next agenda planning. Anyone have anything for the next agenda? Yeah, the bylaws.
And the Ledgerd?
And Ledgerd.
And math.
And math. Anything else? Mindfulness?
Oh, oh, that's good, yeah.
Anything else? I, I can't hear you.
COVID-19 expenditures, what they're anticipated to be?
An update on that?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. So I think we're good there. And public comment? Any other public comment? Okay.
So, can we go back? So are we going to report on the RFP for the bus, the bus contract? Because that's due January 31st, correct?
So the, um, the R, the responses are due on January 31st, so right now we don't have any. So I'm not sure when the February board meeting is, but we'll have.
It's the 28th.
Okay.
That's a good question, though. Can I, can I ask the finance, negotiations committee? Do, do you want to be involved, the negotiations subcommittee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So we're going to have to schedule a meeting before that and then bring it to the, yeah, that, that would work.
Right, but we should provide some status at the February meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll meet with the negotiations and bring it to the full board.
So for the next agenda, you want the bus contract update? Okay.
Is that right, Ian?
Yes.
But do you want, again, you want the negotiations committee brought in first before that board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why, okay. We're on the same wavelength, okay. Got it.
Okay. There being nothing else, we will go to executive session.
Oh, yeah, what's the time?
Oh. You got it?
No, I can't see.
It's like I can't see it either.